Amy Bryan.
Good evening, Board members and fellow WCPSS staff. As most of you are aware, this year we have had lots of issues with transportation. When my students arrive late to school or don't make it to school at all because they don't have a bus driver or other transportation, they lose learning opportunities. Each year I have taught students who do not eat if they do not have school lunch. Especially in today's world, our schools should be consistently safe places that families can count on. When the buses arrive late for pickup in the afternoon, families stress worrying about whether or not their students are safe. Our school is out at 3:00. Students should be on their way home by 3:30. Yesterday, the last bus picked up at 4:15. Teachers and staff have had to create a schedule to help each other so that we can make it to other jobs. Solidarity. Without transportation, students cannot make it to or from school. Without school meals, some students do not eat regularly. It is hard to function if our basic needs are not met. Teaching is a career. Educators and classified staff should not have to have more than one job in order to make ends meet. I am here to request a living wage for all staff. I think that it is important to use our voices collectively to create positive changes in our world. Solidarity. Our WCPSS board has worked to increase pay for staff members and to provide bonuses for staff. This is greatly appreciated, however, it is still not enough to recruit and retain staff. For example, I looked at the numbers yesterday, and we still have approximately 79 vacancies for bus drivers despite sign-on bonuses and an hourly increase. As we continue to improve salaries and working conditions, this allows for better recruitment and retention of qualified and dedicated staff. I am here in solidarity with NCAE coworkers to ask that the board provide a wage of at least $18.20 for all WCPS employees. I told a CNS worker today that I plan to speak at the board meeting tonight, and they said, "Good. You're going to speak for all of us." Solidarity. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Kiana Espinoza, followed by Lindsay Lewis. And Mr. Grant King, I see that you're back. I'm going to put you at the end.
Hi, my name is Kiana Espinoza Almeter, and I am an eighth-grade teacher at Diller Drive Magnet Middle. And I am here in solidarity with my coworkers and also with Wake NCAE on behalf of West Carey Middle School, who I'm sure you guys are aware is requesting some facilities updates. And I would just like to share my experiences working at a brand-new building, which we are very grateful for, all of the updates that you guys have been funding. But I've also been at an older building for a couple of years. So I currently work at Diller Drive Magnet Middle, which was built in 1998. And it's one thing when we see our facilities' problems, but it's another thing entirely when we feel them. So I'd like to share a story with you guys that kind of highlights our facilities' issues in my building. So every morning, I walk in, and sometimes I smell rotten eggs. And that comes from our art room. She's requested several times that that be fixed, but it's a reality of an older building. So we have a lot of issues similar to this, you know, some patchy walls, about two-thirds of my whiteboard space is unusable. But like all teachers do, we make it work, and we make sure that our students have what they need. We also had an incident recently. There was a really terrible incident where we needed to use an iWash station, and that completely flooded one of our science classrooms. So at a school where I believe that we have a great staff and we're making it work, we're still kind of struggling to get our needs met by our current facilities. So I'm here in solidarity with West Carey Middle School, asking for their fully-funded requests from the budget. Thank you so much.
Lindsay Lewis, followed by Erica Drapo.
Good evening. Thanks so much for the chance to speak tonight. My name is Lindsay Lewis. I teach fifth grade at Lake Myra Elementary. That's in Wendell. And I came tonight to ask for the rate of $18.20 for those that work in our child nutrition services. I absolutely cannot do my job if my children are not properly fed. And properly fed does not just mean the food. The workers that work in my cafeteria are unbelievably kind and gracious and welcoming. They're also very patient. I don't know if any of you have ever fed 100 five-year-olds in under 10 minutes, but you really haven't lived until you have done so. I am honored to work with them. I asked for this $18.20 not only because I think it's the moral thing to do, or not only because I think they deserve it, but I also think it's the practical thing for us to do, because I don't want to lose the workers that work in our cafeteria. Wendell, like so many areas in Wake County, is a rapidly-growing community, and I do worry that we'll lose our staff to places like Publix, who currently has an opening at $20 an hour. It's about .7 miles away. Starbucks is opening May 5th. They have many openings. They are $19.69. Wendy's has already been opened, and it's $19 an hour. I'm naming a few, but there are dozens like this within a five-mile radius of my school. Please consider the $18.20 for our child nutrition services. Thank you.
We have Erica Drapo, followed by Emily Hooks.
Good evening, Board members and district staff. My name is Erica Drapo. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Lake Myra Elementary School in Wendell with Lindsay. I want to share with you a story about my kindergarten classroom. Unfortunately, it's not a fun story about how we integrated science and literacy together. I'm going to have to save that for another time, because tonight I want to talk about the budget. I want to talk about how it affects my classroom and the learning within it, as well as the classrooms all around our district and the learning in their classrooms. For the entire third quarter of this school year, our classroom had a broken sink. Throughout the quarter, our day was negatively impacted by this. We had to interrupt neighboring classrooms to wash hands, to fill water bottles multiple times a day. I also had to adjust my learning activities, which may have needed access to those sinks. Not only was the broken sink a disruption to our learning, but it was a safety concern, an additional stress for me to contend with along with the other staff. Finally, after weeks of waiting, the plumbing was restored, and that was a load off of my teacher's shoulders. We no longer had to abandon those messy learning activities within the classroom, or manage 16 kindergarten students while they properly washed their hands before mealtimes to reduce the spread of germs. We remember, excuse me, and remember, I shared that the sink was broken during the third quarter. That's the cold flu and the beginning of the allergy season. Our schools need plumbing, and they need maintenance staff that can respond quicker to these broken equipment needs within our buildings. I can't imagine what it would be like to navigate this issue for an entire school year or longer, like my colleagues at West Carey Middle have had to do, as well as the safety assistants at Rock Quarry and CNS workers around the district. Me and my NCAE union siblings are asking for a budget that reflects care and concern for those facility needs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Hooks, followed by Michelle Craig.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Moore, Chair Mahaffey, and school board members. My name is Emily Hooks, and I work at West Carey Middle School. I spoke at the last March meeting. When coming up with something to say tonight, my heart still pulled me towards the direction of my students' voices. So to prepare for this, I told my eighth graders that I would be speaking at the school board meeting, and the topic of discussion was the budget and the money that Wake County would spend on renovating and building schools. I let them know that I wanted to speak on their behalf. I would speak about their experience and time at West Carey. Many of them wanted their voices heard about the concerns that they have for our building, so we started collaborating. I reminded them multiple times. They probably would not see these upcoming fixes anytime soon, and it wouldn't affect them directly. They said, "Duh, we know it won't happen right now. We'll probably be in high school or college before it does." So then I said, "Well, then, why do you even want to help me write this?" Y'all, their responses blew me away. I might start crying. They said, "I don't want to do it for myself. I want to do it for the teachers that I love. I want to do it for my younger siblings. I want to do it for my neighbors. I want to do it for West Carey to see a better future." If that doesn't make you cry, I don't know what will. This pulled at my heartstrings, and made me very teary-eyed, knowing that these little teenagers were not only thinking of others, but they were thinking of the future. With all that said, we compiled a list of items in a Google Doc where all my students were able to write out their thoughts and ideas. I will list them now, but that would take longer than the two minutes I have. What I can do instead is share that document with the board, because I can find y'all's emails, and send it to you if you want. I think they'd be pretty excited if one of you just said, "Yes, we'd love to see it." So our big ask is this: With the school budget proposal, are you willing to make West Carey one of the four unnamed schools that get updates? Are you willing to value our students' voices and hear their concerns and do something about it? Are you willing to make West Carey a priority, because we felt neglected for far too long? Are you willing to be like our loving students and think of our future? Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Michelle Craig, followed by Christina Spears.
My name is Michelle Craig. I'm a parent and teacher in Wake County Public Schools. Happy National Administrative Professionals Day tomorrow, and happy National Library Week. I'll quickly highlight two budget issues that need immediate attention. First, maintenance and operations for Wake County Public Schools are underfunded by nearly $20 million below the industry standard, and our students and staff cannot afford to wait any longer for facilities that meet basic standards of health, safety, and functionality. I teach in the same building that I was in six years ago, and in that time, issues that we faced have included no heat in the winter, mold, which we were told was various stages of mildew, and plumbing issues, just to name a few. I have a bathroom in my current classroom, which has been broken for most of the year. They keep coming out and fixing it. The second need I will highlight is the need to pay our classified staff a living wage. Our classified staff are the heart of our school system. Without them, we could not function, and we must recruit more and retain them. I would like to tell you a story of my instructional assistant, Jan. I refer to her as my co-teacher because the care and instruction that each of us provides our preschool students is of equal importance. I started this school year as a substitute teacher. Jan began in the fall, and this has been there all year. She was the only teacher in the classroom from September to January when I took the interim position, because her lead teacher went on leave. And Jan taught that class with numerous substitutes assisting for more than three months. During that time, she helped plan, delivered lessons, dried tears. She did it all. She spent a lot of money out of her pocket. The superintendent budget says there will be 10 new regional programs, and you need instructional assistance for those. If you want to get instructional assistance in those positions, we have to increase funding for that for a living wage of $18.20 an hour and raise each of our classified grades $2.20 an hour so we can recruit and retain these essential workers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christina Spears, followed by Becky Lou Hobbs.
Good evening, Chair Mahaffey, Vice Chair Hagerty, and Board members. Hello, Superintendent Moore and staff. I'm Christina Spears, Wake NCAE president. And I want to start by thanking some of you for meeting with our members and workers to hear their stories and find ways to fund our needs in this budget. At the last board meeting, Ms. Edmonds articulated succinctly how an organization's budget is reflective of its values. In the current proposal, it's hopeful to see the emphasis on compensation for all staff, certified and classified. In today's finance meeting, Superintendent Moore named this board's role as to communicate the needs of the district to the county commission, and the commission's role is to fund those needs. We recognize the multi-year plan increases hourly wages for classified staff to $17 an hour in the current proposal. However, our bus drivers, CNS workers, instructional assistants, and safety assistants make up the highest vacancy rates across job categories in our district. Workers in these job categories have been consistently communicating their needs, saying they need livable wages to continue to work in this district without the necessity of a second or third job. We recognize the responsibility of our state legislator in funding our public schools, though Ms. Johnson-Hossler, the finance chair, reminded you this afternoon that it's this body who is currently in control of this budget process and is responsible for making the requests to our county commissioners. So I'm asking, do you value the recruitment and retention of our classified staff here in Wake County Public Schools? You articulated verbally this afternoon that you do. If that is so, demonstrate that value with action by making the right decision to include a livable wage of at least $18 an hour in this year's proposal. I appreciate your willingness to push staff to investigate what this wage increase would cost in your upcoming meetings, and I'm hopeful the board will vote to have our values reflected in this year's budget by investing $18, $20 hourly wages for all classified staff. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Becky Lou Hobbs, followed by Susan Book.
Hello. So Wake County Superintendent and the board seems to have a problem, an addiction to spending. The outgoing superintendent has requested yet again to increase the budget, this time by $55 million. And on the surface, you may think, well, costs have gone up: materials, wages, land, et cetera. Is it really just inflation, or is it poor planning, poor decision-making, or just misplaced priorities? In the proposed budget, you show spending of other school districts compared to Wake County in order to justify the expenditures. Some of these school systems spend in excess of $16,000 per pupil. But when you look at the performance of those systems, they're actually worse than Wake County. And then you compare to local private schools, where children can go for as little as $7,000 and have a better education. So there's absolutely no correlation between spending and a child's education. So what is in this budget? Almost every line item, when I read it, there's an excuse citing end of federal funding. That is extremely poor planning by this board. And why did you fail to plan for that? You knew it was coming. And there's a lot missing from this budget. You've heard from several people here tonight. But there's no focus on academics and improving our children's outcomes from academics. What about the busing issue? You can't even get kids to and from school. What about funding to protect the safety of our children? We need SROs. You have officers protecting you here tonight. Why not protect our children? For years, Wake County has increased the spending. The budget has increased by about 45% since 2016, and that doesn't include COVID funds. And we have fewer students. Focus on what we need to provide: quality education. Spending more money is just spending more money. Stop this addiction to spending.
Our next speaker is Susan Book, followed by Han Yu Hanachou.
Okay, enough with laughing. Hello, my name is Susan Book, and happy Autism Awareness, but most of all, Acceptance Month. And I want to thank the board for paying attention to equity in this budget. As a parent, I know how important support for students with disability, our English learners, and all of our children marginalized by the greater society, how important that can be. I've sat and heard from our amazing professionals, like our OTs, who remind us to move our bodies as well as our minds. I know how important early childhood and our special education professionals are in the earliest stages of education. I thank you. I ask you to remember that not having your bus arrive on time is one of the most dysregulating things that some of our students can experience, not getting through a lunch line as well. The board has spoken at length about efforts to lobby and move our North Carolina General Assembly for more funding. But I ask you, did you know that there is one more office that you should be talking to? The Controller's Office. The Controller's Office. The Controller is the one person right now with a motion holding up Leandro funding, one person. Everything else is ready. So in your budget efforts, I'm going to ask you to talk to our North Carolina Controller or friends of his. If we remove his motion, this budget gets some much-needed relief. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Han Yu Hanachou, followed by Pamela Winston.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Han Yu Hanachou, and I'm the third-grade teacher at Wilburn Elementary. Here tonight also to support raising the minimum wage for classified state staff for $18.20 per hour. I have a total of 20 students. Six of my students have intense behavior needs, and one of them has autism disorder. I'm alone with my students without support. So we, these students also acquire adult assistance in running the hallway during the transitions. I'm very occupied with my instructions, so I desperately need another adult to assist these students. If I have IA in my classroom, my student will feel safe and protected instead of getting into fights. Because I'm without them, I'm definitely in struggle. I also need another adult to assist these students with transitions, like going to the bathrooms in between the classes, so they can enjoy their recess, specials, and lunchtime. So also, the school experience, my other colleagues also experiencing the same issues. I would really urge board to consider raising the wage so we can have IA, we can retain IA, and work together for our students. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Pamela Winston, followed by Chad Stahl.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Pamela Winston. I've been a safety assistant with Wake County since 2017. My job as a safety assistant is to support students by making sure they get to school and get home safely. Transporting students is our job as safety assistants and to make sure they're safe. My coworkers and myself have a number of concerns. This is why we have come together to voice our concerns. Safety assistants are a diverse group of men and women who come from many backgrounds of the working world. Some have retired from other jobs. Some of us are in school or entrepreneurs. I can remember my first day at Wake County, and when I walked onto the lot and seen a bunch of young ladies and men standing in line outside, I didn't understand what was going on, and I was told, "Oh, you have to get in line and wait because you cannot enter the building until 5:30." And I noticed that this happened on a number of occasions. If it was raining, snowing, sleeting, or whatever, we had to wait outside until 5:30 to get into the building. I'm 64 years old. There are employees that I work with that are safety assistants that are my age and older. We care about the children. We love the children, and we want to be there for them. We bring something that's special to these children. Some of us are grandparents, great-grandparents. We just want to know, in your budget for the 2023-24 year, if you would please include an $18.20 an hour increase for us. We have the highest vacancy rate in the county. 35% of the positions are empty for safety assistants. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chad Stahl, followed by Daniel Grant King.
Good evening, everyone. So just real quick, with school choice coming on pretty strong in North Carolina now, Wake County is going to have to become more competitive. It is going to have to really step up and start competing against the other alternatives. In business, we view budget as anticipated revenue against anticipated expense. It has nothing to do with our values, because our values don't fund us. Taxpayers do, and that's reflected by participation. So you can stand strong on values and keep losing students, and we'll keep coming here asking for more money, more money, more money, because you're naturally defeating your own system by closing your door and your minds to what parents are asking you for. Code of Ethics and Responsibilities for School Board Members, Policy Code 2120. The Wake County Board of Education recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to a code as required by General Statute 168-86 and General Statute 115C-4757. It is important that a board member is nonpartisan in dealing with school matters and that he, she not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group, interest, or personal ambition. I believe you guys all signed that, hey, we agree to these codes of ethics. So I'd like to read a couple of them. Item B, Specific Board Member Commitments. Number three, render all decisions based on the available facts and independent judgment and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups. Item 13, avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using the board's members' position on the board for personal or partisan gain. Line item 16, remembers always that a board member's first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare for the students attending the public school. So if you agree to those principles and you're having this budget, I don't hear anyone, I don't hear the red guard talking about it, I don't hear anybody talking about the students and how you are going to benefit the students directly. Thank you.
Mr. Grant King.
All right. First of all, good evening to everyone. Chair Mahaffey, Superintendent Moore, District Staff. I'm Mr. Grant King. Currently, I'm an educator, and I serve proudly as a member of our local union and our state union of NCAE. And also, I'm on the Board of Directors with the PTA of North Carolina. Let's keep it really real as to why this budget is needed. My colleagues have said it best, and apparently, we have had people over and over try to diminish the progress that has been made. But let's make something very clear today, and that is, is that they are afraid, the people that try to diminish the progress are afraid that our students, our educators, and other staff will benefit. And I would like to thank this board, along with Superintendent Moore, for a thoughtful budget, even though it still has a long way to go. But let's remember why we are here, and that is for our students, educators, and families. And that is what this board is about. That's what NCAE is about. And so let's keep it really real. We cannot sit up here and allow, allow, like it has been, the status quo. It is time for a long overdue race. It is time for educators and staff to be compensated, and above all, it is time for everyone to be treated with the dignity and respect that they justly deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This concludes our public hearing on the budget, and appreciate everyone coming and sharing their thoughts this evening. We now move on to public comment. For a public comment, the same disclaimer that I read earlier still applies, except it is a three-minute time limit. And again, you will see a yellow button when you have 30 seconds left, and a red one when you have, when your time is up. We have seven speakers for public comment tonight. The first, Mr. Steve Rowell from Morrisville Town Council.
Thank you. Madam Chair and School Board, first of all, I want to thank Steve Rowell, serving the City Council. I want to thank you all for your service, and really thank you for the new high school coming in Wake Tech. We're really excited. I came here today sometimes to come and share some insights in my role also as a media analyst on PBS and WPTF Radio, and just to share ideas with policymakers. And so last week, I hosted the Indian Ambassador, Tarangit Sandhu, along with Governor Cooper in Morrisville for a small business event with the Biden administration. And over lunch with Secretary Commerce Sanders and leaders of the community, I learned a couple of things about India, and I wanted to just sort of share a global perspective for the work that you do. for the work that you do. The ambassador indicated to us that today there's 1.2 billion Indians with a digital identity, which means that forty percent of all of the world payments are being done on the device, no more credit card terminals, that in the last five years, they've deployed internet access to the rural areas to 340 million Indians in the last five years. This is unprecedented. And what does that mean? Why am I telling you this? Well, the reason is that I think it just bears, it shows how important the work you're doing for our schools are, because as people are getting more access to the internet in these rural areas, they're getting the skills they need in a knowledge economy. Today, the final point I want to make is the ambassador said that in the nation of India, sixty-five percent of the population is under the age of twenty-six. So what that means is there's a huge, vast emphasis on training and knowledge, the knowledge economy, and I think it's, it just justifies all the more reason why, how important it is. Number one, that we work to deploy internet faster across the state, and the governor and secretary Weaver is doing that. It's also important that we invest in STEM education, like we're doing in early career education at Wake Tech RTP. That's really important, critically important. So my final remarks are, I couldn't think of a better person to ask, okay, what advice can I give the school board about what we should be thinking about in terms of the jobs of tomorrow? So I said, who could I text and call? And I texted John Chambers, who's the former CEO of Cisco. He's a family fund man from West Virginia. He ran a forty-seven billion dollar company and actually was a dyslexic from the West Virginia school systems. And John told me tonight to remind you that as we automate AI, with AI, we're going to automate about forty percent of the jobs over the next decade, but we can create fifteen million new jobs. And one of those three areas, entrepreneurship. India had a hundred thousand startups and thirty thousand unicorns or billion-dollar companies, but we can create more entrepreneurs. We can create more jobs in AI, John says, and we can create more jobs in cybersecurity. So the work that you're doing is incredibly important, and I just wanted to share that global perspective, because we're competing with every nation in the world, and as the rural area, urban divide is widening in the U.S., it's shrinking in other nations of the world, and that's something we should all be very concerned about. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao. Our next speaker is Sam Cronin, followed by Sarah Hooks.
My name is Samantha Cronin, and I'm here with my friend Hampton Hoffer. We both have children in second grade and kindergarten at Root Elementary, along with a few other younger siblings who can't wait to join their big brothers there one day soon. Baseline, we are so proud to be part of Wake County Public Schools, and we really just want to start off by saying thank you for all that you do, everyone in this room, to help support and grow our, our school system. Clearly, you do so much, and it's very hard work, and it's very important work. On the heels of yet another tragic school shooting, we are here today to humbly and urgently ask what we can do to help support you in bolstering the safety and security of all Wake County public schools. We represent a growing group of anxious and worried parents across Wake County who are also highly motivated to plug in and help be part of the solution, whatever that looks like, both at our individual schools and for the school system at large. We simply don't know where to start. We acknowledge that this trend of school shootings is multifaceted issue, and school safety and security is just one small piece of that puzzle. But while we look to solve those larger issues, our kids have to go to school tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day, and so do our educators and the staff at all of the schools. So we are aware of the recent Wake County Public School Safety Assessment that was conducted, and we're so grateful for that strong first step. Our questions and presence here today are really meant to be a jumping off point to build a more collaborative and action-oriented relationship between you board members and parents across the county on the particular topic of school safety. The following sort of questions kind of fall into two buckets. I think how can we, we're thinking about how can we accelerate change across the school system at large? And again, not just Hampton and I, but we have, there are parents all over who are thinking about this and worried about this. And then also separately, but at the same time, how can we move certain initiatives forward at our individual schools, and what does the crossover between those two things look like? So our questions really are, first, how can we as parents help accelerate and support implementing the recommendations from the school safety assessment amongst other potential ideas across the school system? In what literal ways can we mobilize a passionate group of parents who are eager to support the school board's safety initiatives with tangible next steps? And then separately, in kind of that second bucket, help us understand how much leeway do individual schools have to fundraise for implementing school-specific improvements in conjunction with our leadership? While the goal is to make all of our schools safer, parents and administrative teams are also curious to understand what can be done at their individual schools in addition to or alongside the solutions on the system-wide roadmap. At a high level, what would that process even look like? Where do we start? So in summary, we are here kind of seeking guidance and direction on how to best be of service in tangible ways with respect to school safety and security improvements. Can you help provide us with next steps? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Hooks, followed by Julie Stivers.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Hooks, and my sister Emily is a teacher at West Carey Middle School. Day in and day out, my sister shows love and dedication to her students and her colleagues, and she only has the nicest things to say about the staff that she works with. She's mentioned a time or two that this is one of the best groups of teachers that she's ever worked with. The students at West Carey are a phenomenal group of kids also, and I've seen this firsthand when I visited the school for West Carey's annual color run and other public events. They seem like such a happy group of people with a very beautiful outdoor campus. The greenery, trees, and flowers are gorgeous. However, when I visited inside the building, it reminds me of when I was in middle school. I'm from Charlotte, North Carolina, and I went to a school in a very similar situation as West Carey. It was a very old school, built about sixty years ago and was overlooked by the Mecklenburg School System. It's since been renovated and looks wonderful. Middle schoolers make it work with whatever they have, but I'm telling you, if I was a middle schooler and we got things updated or renovated, I would have been an excited kid. This is all I want for the students, teachers, and other staff members at West Carey. I want them to have an amazing place to learn, grow, and help one another. And I want my sister and her colleagues' love and dedication to be reciprocated by the county. I truly hope you're willing to put West Carey on the renovation list so they know that they have been seen and heard. Thank you all.
Would the National Librarian of the Year please approach the podium to speak?
That's not necessary.
Raise this up a little bit. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we all take a moment and just recognize that in Wake County, we do have the National Librarian of the Year? I know you're not here for that, but I will take that as a point of personal privilege, and thank you for indulging me.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm definitely not here for that. Something related. Hi, I'm Julie Stivers, librarian, educator, mom. We are in the midst of an alarmist theater of book challenges across the U.S., and many of these challenges have the same talking points because they're top-down, sometimes scripted efforts. To offer a counterstory to those points, I'd like to make my own, and this is a shout-out to C.J. Soot and George Yamazawa for inspiring this structure. It's called Ten Things You Should Know About Being a School Librarian. One, librarians support literacy. Literacy not only drives academic achievement across all subjects, but it improves life outcomes. Number two, librarians understand that literacy is nurtured through choice, through availability, and through inclusion. Number three, all students that walk through the door of a school library deserve to see books on the shelves that affirm themselves, their families and communities, their lived experiences, and real history. Number four, librarians are trained educators. We all have master's degrees in library science. As part of our programs, we study many topics, including selecting books for specific age ranges, youth development, children's and teens literature, and the teaching of literacy. Number five, we love when families read our books. Stories may try to pit librarians and parents against each other, don't believe it. We see families as partners in celebrating the reading lives of our students. Number six, we also believe in parents' rights and students' rights. Because of this, we understand that a small number of parents does not have the right to tell other parents what their children can and cannot read. Number seven, I can't believe I have to say this, but here it goes. Number seven, we are not, and I quote, "peddlers of pornography." I am a middle school librarian. I choose books that are a good age fit for middle school students. Number eight, the library for many students is a sanctuary. Number nine, we believe in intellectual freedom. We do not force students to read a certain book. Instead, we invite them into a community of readers. We talk with students about what to do if they start a book they don't like or they don't feel ready for, for whatever reason. It's very simple. Are you ready? You close the book. Books are magical that way. It is completely different from online content, for example, which you can scroll forever. You simply close the book and you get another one, and there is great power in that, and there is power in letting students make that choice in a nurturing environment with, again, literature that's been chosen for their age range. Number ten, we love literacy, we love literature, we love learning, and we love our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Hooks, followed by Chris Tuttle. Is this the whole Hook Sisterhood?
Yes. My brother said no thanks, but that's okay. He's at home watching it on TV.
Well, hi. My name is Rachel Hooks, and my sister Emily, Ms. Hooks, is a math teacher at West Carey Middle School. She is such a caring and phenomenal teacher and really wants her students to thrive and grow in her class, as do all of the teachers that I have met that work with my sister. They all put so much time and effort into their duties as teachers, and in order for them to do their job the best that they can, I believe their school needs to be considered for an upgrade. It is almost sixty years old and feels like a little neglected to the eye. The students and the teachers alike would be able to better meet their goals if they have a sustainable and maintained facility. The community surrounding West Carey is growing, like the Park West Shopping Center and the new housing developments all around, and I think the schools in it need to grow with it. And I will ask this, think of your siblings. Do you love and cherish them? Do you hope that they have a happy and sustainable life? If you had a sister working in a building that needed major renovations, would you stand up and speak for her? If you'd answered yes to any of those questions, then please consider moving West Carey up in the renovations list. Thank you.
Chris Tuttle, followed by Crystal Behrend.
Good evening, Superintendent Moore, Chairman Haffey, and other board members. My name is Chris Tuttle, and I am one of the librarians at South Garner High School, as well as a parent of a former and current Wake County student. Finally, a proud member of Wake NCAE. I stand here tonight to disrupt the harmful and ongoing narrative about librarians and the books we choose, and I want to do that by telling you a story, the story of the school library at South Garner High School. It is so much more than a collection of books, it is a place of joy. It is a space where our students and their families can see themselves and their lived experiences represented in our books, on our walls, and in the activities we facilitate. It can be a quiet space for a student to study, a space where students come to collaborate, a place where students wrestle with ideas, a spot to reflect, breathe deeply, and simply be, a place to laugh, and sometimes even a place to cry, a place to connect through playing games like Uno, Connect Four, and Jenga, a place to get a snack, a place to read. Ms. Lewis and I are honored to serve our amazing titans and strive to build a program that represents the beautiful tapestry of students and families that come through our doors daily. We know book ownership is a privilege, and our families face many barriers accessing books and information in our community. Many of our families do not have the disposable income to buy books, nor do they have transportation to get to the public library. Therefore, the collection we lovingly curate at South Garner High School is even more important to our community. Censorship and book banning disproportionately affects the students that we serve, because in many cases, we are their only point of access. Today, I am asking each of you what I challenge my students to do daily. Be curious. Ask yourselves, who are the people choosing to read excerpts of books aloud here each week? Whose voices are missing from the conversation? Why do some in this community believe they have a right to make decisions for all families? Which books are being targeted? How is history repeating itself? In the words of NEA President Becky Pringle, I will continue to be an unapologetic advocate for the students and families of South Garner High School, and I hope you will continue to do the same. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Crystal Behrend.
I know I've heard your name before, and for some reason, I'm looking at it and struggling. I'm so sorry.
It's not a problem. It's not the first time. Good evening, Superintendent Moore, Chairman Haffey, and board members. I'm Crystal Behrend, one of the proud librarians at Knightdale High School and mother of two Wake County graduates. I'd like to talk to you about the revisions for Policies 3210 and 3210, selection of instructional materials, and the challenge policy. As you take on this task, some of which is necessary, I'd like to remind you of a few things that you might have heard a couple of times tonight. Your librarians are professionals with master's degrees, your teachers are curriculum experts, and literacy is the foundation of a strong education. Regarding 3210, we've always had a very strong and transparent challenge policy in Wake. I hope you will continue to uphold this policy filled with checks and balances while also putting much-needed limits in place, limits that could avoid our library media staff from being bogged down in a quagmire of repeat challenges purely designed to waste resources. The board can and should make revisions to policy, but should not seek to overreach power and override policy. I have a few concerns about some of the language in Policy 3200 specifically concerning read-alouds. The fact that selection of read-alouds is singled out as something that must be done in collaboration with others implies a lack of trust for our professionals, understanding, and knowledge of age-relevant literature. What's even more concerning is the amount of self-censorship that will happen as a result of this addition. Surely, you are aware that one of the best ways to improve literacy is by reading to children. Yet if I'm a first-grade teacher with five minutes left in class before buses are called, am I going to grab a book that isn't pre-approved or just let kids play on their technology? Would I read a beautiful book like "And Tango Makes Three," or do I fear retribution for sharing a beautiful, true story of two male penguins raising an egg that could be labeled "pervasively vulgar"? In 2020, there were 223 unique titles challenged across the nation. Enter the Famous List by Texas lawmaker, and by 2021, there were 1,858 titles, while 2022 saw 2,571 unique titles challenged, just a bit of an increase following that political ploy. We could probably get Vegas odds on the number for 2023. Those are just the documented challenges. This doesn't even touch the insidious self-censorship that stems from fear. As you rewrite these policies, ask yourself what the fallout may be. I want this board to stand up for intellectual freedom. I want you to assure your teachers and librarians that you believe in our professionalism and the work we are doing. I want you to assure all parents that their children and families will be represented honestly in our literature, and I want you to assure students that you do respect their First Amendment right to access high-quality literature. Good things are happening in our libraries. They are safe and joyful places where everyone is welcome and has access to representative literature. Please acknowledge this in your policy. Thank you.
This concludes our public comment. Thank you to everyone that came out to speak tonight for public comment and for the public hearing.